General, really appreciate it. My name is Seth Rosenthal. I'm the Chief Deputy Attorney General of District Columbia. In plain terms, what that means is that I'm the number two in the office of the Attorney General. The Attorney General, Brian Schwab, sends his regrets. He really wished that he could be here tonight. Unfortunately, he had to be out of town for a meeting. But the reason that he wished that he could be here, and the reason that I am here in his place, is because the sale of Providence Hospital, or the property on which Providence Hospital used to sit, is really important to the District of Columbia, as I know it is to you, and that's why you're here tonight. It's important as a matter of public policy. Providence Hospital is a charity. One of its assets as a charity was the property, is the property that it owns. And that land has been supported by the District of Columbia government since its inception. So it's important when that land is sold from a charity like Providence Hospital to a private entity, that it is sold for fair value. So it is sold for fair value, so that the charitable assets, the assets in which the District of Columbia government and the taxpayers of the District of Columbia have invested are preserved. So it's important as a matter of public policy. It's also, the sale of Providence Hospital property is also important as a matter of law. And that's why we're here tonight. The Office of Attorney General is charged, under District of Columbia law, with reviewing the sale of Providence Hospital as a charitable asset. We're here tonight because, when I say "we" are here tonight, I mean the Office of Attorney General is here tonight, holding this public forum, because one of the things that we will take into consideration as we review the sale of the Providence Hospital property is your input. What the community thinks about the sale of this hospital, and what will be fair value for the sale of those charitable assets, the property that Providence Hospital owns. That's why we're here. I'm going to turn it over now to the team of lawyers that is reviewing the sale of the Providence Hospital property. Kara Spencer, on my far left, and Estefania Perez. They are members of our anti-Trump and nonprofit team, and they have been working on this matter for the last several months, and will continue to work on it till conclusion. So I'm going to turn it over to Kara right now. Thank you.
Hi, thank you Seth. Hi, everyone. I'm Kara. I'm here with my colleague, Estefania Torres-Cayos. We want to thank everyone for coming. We really appreciate everyone coming out on a weeknight for a public hearing. We know how busy everyone is. Juan, could you... Oh, you already did it. All right. A few points before we get started. First, the meeting will be recorded, we're creating an audio recording, so that we can be sure we have everyone's comments. And we'll remind you about this before we hear your comments, but we want you to try to make sure that only one person is talking at a time when you're giving your comments. That will allow us to have a clean transcript, so that we know what everyone said and who said what. We want to hear from as many of you as possible tonight. For anyone who is interested, we have forms that you can fill out with your comments. You can also provide written comments through OAG's, the Attorney General's website, or an email address that we will provide to you. The comment period will be open until 5:00 PM on September 29th. So we are happy to take your comments until that time, and we are looking forward to hearing from you. So one of our goals today is to ensure that the community understands the basic facts about this transaction, about the proposed sale of the Providence campus. And we understand, some of you here know a lot about this deal already. But we'd like to go through the basic facts about the proposed sale, so that we can be sure that everyone has the information. Now, the Attorney General is not required to hold a public hearing for this review. But as Seth explained, he wanted to hold this hearing to give everyone a chance to understand what's happening here, what is the Attorney General's role, what are the facts about the proposed sale, to give all of you a chance to digest this information, and let us know what you think about it. So, and this is our agenda for this evening. We don't have a paper agenda, I apologize. If you'd like to have an agenda to look at while you're sitting here, you can take a picture of this slide. We'll be refreshing it throughout to sort of show you as we go through the agenda, but you should feel free to take a photo of this. We will also post this PowerPoint on our website in the coming days. Okay, so what's our plan? First, I will explain why the Attorney General is reviewing the proposed sale, and then I'll describe the terms of the sale. Then, I will turn things over to Estefania, who will talk about the Attorney General's role in reviewing the sale, the process. At that point, Providence and EYA, which is the company that leads the real estate development team that wants to purchase Providence's property, will give brief presentations. Then, we want to hear from you. Okay, so why is the Attorney General reviewing this proposed sale of Providence Hospital? So, as Seth explained, so Providence Hospital closed, as you know, in 2019. It now intends to sell most of its property, approximately 22 acres, to a group of real estate developers, which is led by EYA, and also includes the Mankini Group. The buyer's legal name is Vision PH Associates. I'll sometimes just call it EYA for short, but I want to be clear that the group, it's not just EYA, it also includes the Mankini Group. It's the group of, the both of them, that is involved in this deal, with EYA in a managing position. EYA and the Mankini Group have both developed many residential properties in the District, Maryland and Virginia. All right, so real estate deals happen all the time without the Attorney General's approval. This deal is different, because Providence Hospital, again as Seth explained, is a charity. There's a special law that says the Attorney General must review a change of this nature in the assets of a healthcare charity. So, why is that? Okay, for two reasons. So first, thank you Juan. First, public funds and charitable donations have always supported Providence's work since 1861. And public funds and charitable donations allowed it to acquire its land. Sorry. The public also supports Providence through tax breaks. That's the first point. Second, like any charity, Providence gets public support because by law, its funds can only be used to support its charitable purposes. That's a legal restriction. And that restriction applies to everything that Providence owns, including its land. That is why there's a strong public interest in what happens to the land. As reflected in DC law, the public interest specifically requires that the sale adequately protect Providence's charitable assets. The charitable assets, in this case, is the land that Providence is selling. If the land were to be sold to another charity, then the sale would clearly protect Providence's charitable assets, because the land would be transferred from one charity to another, and it would continue to be subject to that restriction, that it would have to be used for charitable purposes. However, EYA is not a charity, the Mankini Group is not a charity, and once these developers acquire the land, they have no legal obligation to use it to support charitable purposes. They can use the land just like any other landowner. And there's nothing wrong with that. But for that reason, that's why the Attorney General must ensure that Providence receives adequate value for the land, and that the deal, the agreement between Providence and EYA, is a fair deal overall. Okay. If Providence receives adequate value, that is, if the purchase price is fair, based on the market value of the property, then the sale may be adequately protecting Providence's charitable assets, right, the land. However, on the other hand, if the purchase price is not fair, that is, if we, at the Office of the Attorney General, determine that EYA is paying too little for the land based on its fair market value, then Providence's charitable assets, the land, that is, are not being adequately protected. That's what our goal is to assess. Now, to be clear, a charity can sell its assets, a charity can sell its land. The public does not run charities. The Attorney General does not run charities either. His role here, Attorney General Schwab's role, is limited. But in a sale of this magnitude between a charitable hospital and a for-profit company, the law requires the Attorney General to make sure that the deal is a fair deal overall, and that EYA pays a fair price for the land. Now, there have been, as I'm sure you know, many hearings about this deal, many meetings about this deal, and our job today is not to repeat what's been done, it's not to repeat what's already been discussed. Rather, it's to focus on the Attorney General's special role here, to examine this deal, to kick the tires on EYA's and Providence's statements about what the land is worth, and independently ensure that the deal is fair, and that EYA does not get a windfall from the sale. And for that, we want your views. Okay, so I now want to turn to explaining the terms of the proposed sale. Okay, so let's look at a map here. All right. This is, this is, this is a Google Maps image of the Providence campus. You can see there, it's Buchanan Street up to the north, 12th Street northeast, to the right side of the map, Varnum Street to the south, and some of the buildings that we're talking about are labeled. What we'll talk about now is our understanding of the plan, based on what Providence and EYA have told us, with the understanding that there are still some things being negotiated. So we're going to describe it as we understand it. So on this map, the blue line shows the boundary of the land Providence would sell to EYA. Altogether, it's approximately 22 acres. As I've said, Providence and EYA are still negotiating exactly what portions of this land will be sold. Now, as you know, some of the buildings on this land are vacant. The plan would involve EYA demolishing those buildings to prepare the land for redevelopment. However, some of the buildings are still occupied, still operating. Those buildings would stay and continue to operate. So I want to show you this in some more detail. So here, you can see the buildings that will be, that are currently vacant, they'll be demolished. They've got the red X's on them. You can see the main hospital, right there. That will, that is vacant, that will be demolished. Up to the, a little bit to the north, you can see St. Catherine's Hall and Ross Auditorium, and Seton House. Those will be demolished. And finally, you can see the power plant towards the center of the, of the map. So this is the power plant that powered the main hospital and other buildings on the campus. It currently provides power to some of the operating buildings. After the developer builds a replacement utility infrastructure for the buildings on the site, as well as those that will be redeveloped on the site, the developer will transition the existing buildings onto that new utility infrastructure. And at that point, the power plant will be decommissioned and demolished. So the power plant will not be on the, that will be demolished. Okay, so here we've got the picture of the buildings that are standing. So I want to turn to that. They're in green outline, those are currently operating, and they will continue to operate. So Carroll Manor, Carroll Manor, sorry, this is a senior assisted living facility. This is operating now, it's going to stay, it's going to continue to operate. I mentioned earlier that the parties are continuing to negotiate exactly what portions of the land will be transferred. We understand that it is possible that some of the land on which Carroll Manor sits will not be part of the, of the, of the sale. So again, there's still some things that are being negotiated. Okay, you can see over here, adjoining, physically adjoining the main hospital building are the DePaul and Providence Medical Office buildings. These are currently operating, there's medical offices in them, medical practices, these buildings will stay. There's also a parking, well, it's a parking garage, really. That's a dedicated parking garage for the medical buildings, that will also stay. And finally, you can see the police and fire clinic. That's, that office, that provides certain medical services for the district's police and firefighters. That building will also stay. Okay, so in summary, here's the plan, as we understand it. Under its proposed agreement with Providence, EYA will pay Providence a purchase price of $1 for the land. Providence, oh, sorry, EYA also promises to demolish the currently vacant buildings. That's in the agreement. EYA also intends certain further steps. It intends to clean up environmental hazards on the site, such as asbestos, such as lead, such as non-hazardous amounts of PCBs, and to do so in a way that allows the currently operating buildings to remain in operation. EYA also plans to, you know, prepare the site for redevelopment, and to build residential properties on the site. Now, according to EYA, some of those, some of that housing will be affordable housing. Now, the law requires some affordable housing in a project of this size, and it could be up to 20%, depending on what shape the project takes overall. EYA recently told the district's State Health Planning and Development Agency, SHIPTA, which is another agency that is reviewing this transaction, this sale, EYA recently told SHIPTA that it will build approximately 350 to 450 housing units, 20% of which will be affordable. The exact plan for redevelopment is still under discussion. Now, the $1 price. EYA and Providence say that $1 is a fair price, because EYA will face significant costs doing all of the steps and taking all of the plans that I've just set out. Demolishing vacant buildings, cleaning up environmental hazards in a way that allows the currently operating buildings to remain in operation, and to generally prepare the site for redevelopment. Also decommissioning the power plant and putting in new utilities. And, okay, so that's, that's all for me, and what I want to do now is to turn things over to Estefania, who is going to talk about the Attorney General's role in reviewing the sale.
Thanks Kara. Hello, everybody. As you heard Kara say, Providence is selling its campus to EYA for $1. In a moment, you'll have a chance to hear from Providence and EYA on this. But before I get to discuss some of what we're doing to review this deal, I want to take a couple of minutes to explain our current understanding of the deal, based on Providence and EYA's representations. Now, Providence says that the costs associated with the property are too high to manage, and therefore, having EYA take over the property is a good deal. Providence also says that it believes EYA will put the land to good use by building affordable housing, including some affordable housing, and as Kara said, some of it will be required by law. EYA says that it will cost a lot of money to demolish vacant buildings on campus, and clean up environmental problems on the site, including asbestos, lead paint, some non-hazardous levels of PCBs found in the old buildings on the campus. And that it will do so, it will cost a lot of money, they say, to do so in a way that is safe, and that allows the medical offices that are currently operating on the campus to stay open and operating. Now, both EYA and Providence say this deal is fair and reasonable, because it will be very difficult and expensive to demolish the vacant buildings and clean up the site. EYA recently told us, too, that they believe it will be especially expensive to do the demolition without damaging the medical office buildings on campus. And that's the DePaul and Providence Medical Buildings, if you're familiar with the property. Now, this is a very complicated deal, it's very technical. So we're doing a lot of work behind the scenes at the Office of the Attorney General to review all aspects of this sale, including to make sure that it is for fair value, given the conditions of the campus. All right. I want to make sure I'm on the right slide. So, because this is a complicated deal, the Attorney General has hired independent real estate and environmental experts to help us with our review. The real estate experts have visited the site and examined its conditions. They're helping us assess what the land is worth. The environmental experts are helping us do an independent review of the environmental risks associated with demolishing the vacant buildings, and of the cost of doing that cleanup safely. They will help us determine whether it will cost as much as Providence and EYA will to clean up the site safely, because that is one of their main reasons for the proposed purchase price of $1. Now, because, the purchase price, taking into account all those costs, is one of the factors, but not the only factor, involved in our review. For instance, we're also reviewing why EYA picked Providence, I'm sorry, why Providence picked EYA to be the buyer for the campus. We're also reviewing how the negotiations were done, to make sure that they were done arms-length. Right. I also want to be clear that at this point, the Attorney General has not reached a decision on this. It's possible that $1 is the price for the property, given its conditions, and that it will in fact protect Providence's charitable assets. Hate that word, but what, what means is basically the property. Like I said, EYA says that it will cost a lot of money to clean up the site and do the demolition, right? The alternatives may not be attractive for the public. Providence says that it is losing a lot of money supporting the campus, and that it may not be able to afford to continue to do so. And the now vacant buildings arguably provide little to no benefit to the community as they are. Now, it is also possible that $1 is not a fair price to the public, given that 22 acres in DC usually goes for a lot more money than a dollar.
Really?
And... And once this sale goes through, EYA is likely going to make a lot of money developing this land.
Really?
I've told you about some of what we're looking at, that is only one aspect of what we're looking at. Like I said, we're reviewing all aspects of this sale. I've told you about some of the ways that we're doing that, but there are of course limits to the Attorney General's review, so I want to take some time to explain to you what we're not doing here. We're not reviewing Providence's decision to close the Providence Hospital. That hospital has been closed since 2019, and that decision is now final. The Attorney General is reviewing all aspects, all aspects of this sale, but their review is solely focused on the sale. Now, what happens at the end of this process? The Attorney General may approve the deal as-is, reject the deal, or approve the deal with certain conditions. I'm going to walk you through each of them. If the Attorney General approves this deal, that does not mean the deal goes through. There's another agency, like Kara said, SHIPTA, the State Health Planning and Development Agency, SHBDA, that is doing its own review of this deal, and the developers need two yeses, one from the Attorney General, and one from that agency, for this deal to go forward. The second option is the Attorney General rejects this deal. If the Attorney General rejects this deal, the deal cannot go through. At that point, several things may happen. So, one thing that may happen is Providence and EYA may go back and work on a different deal, and present a different deal for approval. EYA may decide to walk away entirely from this project. Providence may enter into a different deal with a different buyer, and present that different deal for approval. Or EYA may file a lawsuit and ask a court to decide that this deal is fair to the community after all. All right. The third option is the Attorney General may approve this deal with certain conditions. As we've explained, the Attorney General cannot approve a deal unless he determines that it is fair to the public, given all aspects of the deal. Now, like my colleague said, that does not mean that the land needs to say yes-is, it does not mean that Providence cannot sell its land. All the law requires is that the deal is fair to the public. And that's why we're soliciting public comment today. We want to hear your views. We think they're important. We think it is also important to educate everyone about what is happening. If the deal is unacceptable, we'd like to hear your views on what would make a deal acceptable. And of course, we cannot promise that we would be able to incorporate everyone's views into potential conditions, but the Attorney General thinks it is important to hear from you. We want to be able to consider your decisions, your comments in his decision. All right, so comments, okay, this is the great part, I'm personally looking forward to hearing from you. As you think through this information, we thought that there are three questions that are good, God-shit, questions to ask yourself about this presentation. Is this deal fair? If not, what would make it fair? What are you most excited about the deal? What are your biggest concerns? Now, we understand that, again, this deal is very technical, and some of you may want time to go home and fully process this information. You can submit your written comments to us, and we'll provide the information of where you can do that. This is a QR code that opens up to a web survey. We also have paper surveys here in the front, so at the end of the hearing, you can pick those up, fill them out, and then return them to us. You can also send us an email, that email providencehospitalcomments@oag.dc.gov, and we'll, we ask you to submit all comments by September 29th. Now, the reason for that deadline is that the other agency, SHIPTA, is doing its own reviews of the deal, and the Attorney General will have a 60-day clock to make his decision once that agency decides to request to see the Attorney General's decision. We want to have enough time to read everyone's comments and consider your submissions, so we please ask you to submit the comments by the deadline. And I'll, at the end of the hearing, I'll bring this slide back up, so that if people want to pull up the QR code, they can do that, but again, there are paper forms here in the front. All right. Now, next slide. To learn more about the sale, we have a lot of information on our website at oagdc.gov/providence. There are frequently asked questions there, but we have copies of those frequently asked questions here for people who want to get more educated before they submit written comments. The other agency has materials that the parties, EYA and Providence, have submitted in connection with their application to that agency. You can contact them and ask for those materials. All right. Now, EYA and Providence are here, and they have RSVP'd and asked to be given the opportunity to give a presentation to you. We believe you'll also want to hear from them, so we've allocated 15 minutes to your presentation. I'll try to be very strict with those 15 minutes, because the purpose of this hearing is to hear from you. But at the end of the hearing, if you have any questions that you think there are, be better able to answer, we'll allow them to do that, because again, we want you all to be as informed as possible. All right, so I'll pass it over to Eric Berman.
Thank you, Estefania. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. First, I want to thank Estefania, Kara, Seth, Adam, the entire team in the Attorney General's office, for all of the hard work that you're doing in evaluating this deal. This is a complicated deal. This is not easy, and we know how hard you're working. As Estefania said, my name is Eric Berman. I live here in the district, I've worked here in the district. I am counsel to Providence Hospital. I promise you, I will be very brief. It is... It is far more important that you hear from Providence and Evan on behalf of the buyers than it is that you listen to another lawyer drone on it. But I'll do my best. I do want to amplify one thing that Estefania and Kara told you, and that that, this is simply not about a purchase price. Providence sells campus for $1 certainly makes an eye-grabbing headline. It is not an accurate headline. Respectfully, it is a misleading headline. Providence sells campus with aging, unused buildings for $32 million in value and affordable housing for the community? That's another headline, one that we think is more accurate. This campus is losing money, lots of it, every single day. Maintaining the status quo is the outcome that is actually diminishing charitable assets. I can assure you that Providence did not enter into this deal lightly. This has been years in the making, a multi-stage process during which Providence negotiated hard to get the best deal it could for a campus populated with old and unused buildings. Kara used the word windfall. The buyers are not getting a windfall here. The fact that Providence got the developers to agree to pay tens of millions of dollars, again, north of $32 million in demolition and remediation costs, the costs that the Attorney General's office had on the screen, I think is extraordinary and I think shows that Providence got a fair deal for its assets. Estefania mentioned that the Attorney General's office hired appraisers and environmental experts, as it should. Again, this office is working day and night on us. But Providence did the same thing, and the buyers did the same thing. There was a lot of due diligence here. Both sides have spent a lot of time, resources, and effort making sure that this is the best deal for everyone and that it results in a more affordable housing and beautiful outdoor space to enhance Ward 5. I'm going to stop there. I'm going to hand them back to the people you should be hearing from. Bo Higginbotham is the head of Providence. He'll tell you how Providence decided to sell, how it arrived at this deal. Sitting to Bo's left is Evan Goldman, who will tell you about the tremendous work that the buyers have done to respond to the community's needs in this deal. I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to engage in this hearing as well. My name is Bo Higginbotham, as mentioned earlier. I'm the head operator at Providence Health System. And as we have recounted in various forums and as both Providence and the buyers have engaged with D.C.'s community throughout this process, the Providence campus has suffered tremendous financial losses in recent years through its healthcare operations. Those were only exacerbated over the past three years as a result of a pandemic, which we're all very familiar with the impact it's had on healthcare operations. Without going into the specifics of those challenges and the difficult decision to ultimately discontinue acute care services on its campus, it's been widely acknowledged that those financial losses were untenable. This is a critical point in recognizing that the OAG is not reviewing the sale of the thriving and financially viable nonprofit hospital. It's reviewing the sale of an old vacant degraded building and other real estate assets. Those assets have zero value until redeveloped and continue to pose a potential risk to the surrounding communities, given the hazards that are present with a vacant structure like this. While the original plans for the campus envisioned repurposing the land into a healthy village concept and even included distributed RFQs to approximately 20 developers in the district's Department of Small and Local Businesses in the early 2018 year, ultimately, however, it was concluded that this concept was not financially viable. Providence then pivoted to meet affordable housing needs in the district, resulting in the transaction under review. As a result, the RFQ was modified accordingly to fulfill this vision. Ascension's intention for this property is to sell it to Vision PH to recreate a financially viable campus with an emphasis on affordable housing and community park space and sharing it blends with the fabric of the community today. During negotiations, we required that any development plans prioritize affordable housing with a focus on seniors and include community park space that surpasses the district's minimum requirements for projects of this magnitude. The current concept plan accommodates up to 30% affordable housing and allocates nearly two acres of community park space. One challenge we face is the advanced aging condition of the campus, as I had mentioned earlier. It has several interconnected buildings, which were described earlier as well, all supported by an outdated infrastructure that's well past its useful life. Complicating matters further, there are two sizable medical office buildings on-site owned by a third party with continued operations today. These buildings are interconnected with the hospital infrastructure and a central utility plant. Initial valuations estimated the campus market value to be around $32 million in a development-ready state. This figure factors in our emphasis on limiting excessive market rate housing and our push for more affordable housing and community park space, both of which have the potential to drive down that valuation. The valuation also considers costs associated with parking and the operation of the utility plant, which provide utilities to the two central medical office buildings, limiting development. The financial strain of updating the campus for our proposed vision and our commitment to prioritizing affordable housing come with substantial costs that offset the property's market value. We estimate these costs to be in the ballpark of $30 million. This takes into account the challenges in the detaching the power plant from the current facilities it serves and the complexities of demolishing the hospital buildings connected to the operating medical office buildings there today. Given these considerations, the remediation costs have a likelihood of equaling or even surpassing the land's current estimated value. Consequently, we mutually agreed upon a transfer amount of $1, essentially accounting for the estimated remediation costs and demolition costs against the land's appraised market value. At this, I'll turn it over to Evan Goldman to provide an overview of the campus.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you to the OAG for hosting this and to all of you for coming. It's nice to see so many familiar faces in the audience. My name is Evan Goldman. I'm Executive Vice President for Acquisitions and Development at EYA. I'm also one of the owners of the company. And I just have a few quick slides to share. Go to the next slide. So this is the campus image that Kara walked you through before. And so just to make sure everybody's clear, those buildings outlined in black will all remain on the campus. And the Carroll Manor Building to the upper left, the senior living facility, will remain in place. That will continue to be owned by Ascension and Providence. There is a police and fire clinic, occupational therapy clinic, number four, that will remain in place. And operating the medical office buildings, if any of you use those tenants today, will remain in place and continue to operate on campus, so you can still visit those doctors. And then that's put those are number one and two. And then the parking garage that serves those medical office buildings, number three, will remain in place as well. Let's go to the next slide. When, you know, we've been talking to Providence for a number of years. The reason is we developed the townhomes across the street. So the Michigan Park, Townhomes of Michigan Park is a neighborhood that EYA developed. And as a result of that, we got to know many members of the community quite well and we got to understand some of the concerns of the community. So as Providence reached out to us, we were very clear with them that if they ever wanted to redevelop this campus, the key things that they would, that the community is going to want to see is affordable housing, care for seniors, retention of the medical office uses that are there as much as possible, parks, open space, quite frankly, parks to replace the park that we redeveloped behind the Josephite Seminary Building. And so that was written into our transaction with Providence from the beginning. So they had a charitable mission in mind initially in that, yes, we're going to sell this campus. They've been here for a very long time. But how do they do something that is good for the neighborhood, good for the district, and is a win-win, especially when the city is in such need of affordable housing? So when you heard before, you know, talk about, you know, could this go back and forth? Could this be delayed? Could it be rejected? You know, the city's in a crisis from an affordable housing perspective, and we need, as a city, to be improving projects that are, you know, offering potentially 30% affordable housing. And that's really critical to this transaction. So these are some of the things that we've been very focused on as we've been talking with the community. The next slide. And this was a vision we had come up with initially for the site. And then we've been out in the community. We've held over 20 meetings at this point, both general meetings, online meetings, in-person meetings, meetings in front of the ANC. We've spoken to hundreds and hundreds of people in the community at this point, and thank you, in fact, many of you sitting here today, to make sure that the vision we initially had is consistent with what the community is looking for. And while you'll never find unanimity, not everybody in this room is going to agree on everything, what we have heard loudly and clearly is appropriate scale and density, appropriate heights that work with the community, architecture that's consistent with the community, parks and open space, a play space, a field. We've proposed a senior walking loop of a half, or sorry, a walking and biking trail of a half-mile long, excellent for seniors exercising in the neighborhood. That's been very well received. And we've heard from many people that affordable housing, senior affordable housing are extraordinarily important too, and all of that is included in what we're proposing. The next slide. So this is the campus. Everything in, kind of shaded in white is what would get redeveloped. We go to the next slide. So, as I think you summed up perfectly, the headline of Providence sells the 22-acre campus for $1 is certainly excellent for a headline in the newspaper. That is not what this transaction is about. It takes a lot of money to redevelop large sites like this that have no infrastructure. And so even if you were to just discount the demolition, as you look at a site like this, we've got to cut the big property up into a whole bunch of streets and blocks so that it can be redeveloped, just like all the blocks in your neighborhood. Those are public streets that were paid for by public dollars typically. And so we're going to need to do that on this site. And so that infrastructure alone is conservatively $15 million, probably more. And as you think about the site across the street, the Josephite Townhome site that we redeveloped, we had existing streets all around us. We only had to create two kind of internal streets that were much smaller. Here, we're going to have to do that on a mass scale. We're going to have to provide utilities underneath all those streets to serve all the new development. That's very expensive. That's typically something that is done publicly. And so those blue lines are just early ideas of where the new streets might go. And so that starts creating developable blocks. The next slide then takes that and breaks it up into what are the parts of the land that can be redeveloped? What are the parts of the land that need to remain open space or can be open space? And we started coming up with large areas throughout the entire plan. And in fact, as you'll see in the fall, hopefully, if this moves forward, we'll come out with even more detailed plans with even more open space. But large open spaces, a soccer field, a play space, place for the community to gather for, you know, movie nights, evenings out, and actual center in Michigan Park that is open space-related, that'll be really good for the neighborhood and something that you'll all be able to use. And so community benefits, things we've worked with the ANC on is how do we make sure the community has rights to use these spaces? How do we make sure that they're open and usable? If you want to host a movie night, if the North Michigan Park Citizens Association wants to hold a festival outdoors, we have, we want to make sure that that's something that can be done here and accommodated. And so that leaves developable blocks. So you're seeing in orange some of the areas that would be developed into potentially townhomes, ranging in the sight with townhomes that are lower density and height, and then going up to a taller multifamily building in the middle. At this point, we're looking at a senior affordable building, a family-oriented affordable housing building, and then townhomes that will be both for sale, both affordable and market rate. And even though our agreement with Providence is that we only need to require to provide 20% affordable housing, our current plan is approximately 30% affordable housing, which is, quite frankly, if there's land in the city that the city owns, the city often will sell land for zero in order to get a developer to build 30% affordable housing. So if you want a comparable or a way to justify a $0 or $1 land price, that happens regularly throughout the city on public transactions in order to incentivize affordable housing. Next slide. This is just a list of all the community meetings we've held to date. So if you're in this room and you have not heard from us or been in a meeting, please reach out to us. We have a website. Providence, it's on there, providencereimagine.com. If you go on there, you'll find our contact information. You can email us directly. If your community or neighborhood or block isn't aware of this, please let us know. We're happy to do a living room chat or an online meeting or a phone call. We will also likely be out in the fall with additional meetings. And so just make sure you sign up through the website so you're aware of when those meetings are happening. And then our ANC, Emily Lucio, who's here tonight, has hosted a number of ANC meetings, and I'm sure she'll continue to do that throughout the fall. And she's been kind of coordinating and consolidating feedback from the community and information. The way the zoning process works in the city is that the ANC is given a great way to determine how planning, what planning is appropriate and what public benefits are appropriate. And I think the Office of Attorney General would likely look to the ANC as well to determine what is appropriate for the community because, you know, somebody needs to be, someone that can consolidate that information. Next slide. So this is some of the community feedback we've heard to date. I usually have the presentation in front of me, so I apologize for being rude and turning. But just some of the key things we've heard, and you please let us know if this is consistent with your thoughts. But we've actually had quite a bit of support for the redevelopment. People recognize that the hospital itself is old and vacant and that they'd like to see something more attractive there, especially the people that live right across the street or around it. And we've really focused our outreach very much on the people that live within a quarter mile to a half mile of the site. And people do want ample park space. They want locally-based minority-owned firms giving equitable opportunity to work here, and that's something we're committed to. And we've been working on a plan to coordinate with the ANC, the Ward 5 council member on that as well, and to make sure that we are representing the city and the diversity of the city and the people who are working on the site. Interest in bringing a new urgent care to the site after the development. Consistent interest in inclusion of small-scale retail. Clear desire for architecture that matches the community. Concern about the total number of homes. So actually, we originally were thinking 500 to 600 units. We've reduced that quite a bit now as a result of feedback from the community, which obviously impacts land value as well. Concern about desire for green space and parks and then how we handle noise that could be generated from those parks, especially at night, are things we're working on. Support for affordable housing. And then interest in how the new street could impact neighborhood streets. And so that's something we'll also work through during the zoning process. Next slide. So anyway, this is a list of all the changes we've made to the plan just in the last number of months based upon community feedback. I didn't get to really introduce EYA at the beginning, but we are one of the most community-focused development companies in the region, as is our partner, Nikiti, who Natasha's here with us tonight. We do deep community outreach, and not just to say we held a meeting. We do it because it actually impacts the plan for the better. So as I said, we've reduced unit counts. We've increased park space. We have actually moved some of the taller buildings to the center of the site so that there's none on the outside edges. We have started working on the hiring and outreach plan and incorporated many ideas about the hardscape, oh, sorry, softscape space and play spaces and reduced the amount of hardscape space. Okay, last slide, I know we're running a little long. So this is probably the crux of everything and the most important slide because it really hints at what the OAG is reviewing, which is the value of a dollar, the property worth a dollar. And so the way the math works, and yeah, feel free to take photos of it. I can see the cameras out. So the way the math works, the estimated demolition costs for the site are roughly $29.5 million. We are, through our due diligence process, confirming that number with consultants. We have a group of about 18 consultants probably on a regular call working on this. That's actually not quite 18, but a lot. In addition, we did that a number of years ago as we were starting to talk to Providence. So that $29.5 million demolition cost number is a relatively conservative number. More than likely, we think it will be higher than that. And we, the development company, EYA and Nikiti, will be taking the risk on that. So if the costs are even higher, that's something we'll be taking the risk on. Secondly, the affordable buildings will generate minimal land value, as you expect, about $1.2 million. And they will also be getting subsidies, federal subsidies, as well as likely city subsidies. So even that $1.2 million of value that's being generated by those affordable units, quite frankly, is more than outstripped by the money that will be coming from the city and the federal government. So that's limited land value there. The townhomes themselves will generate about $30.8 million in land value right now. That will change depending on how many units ultimately get approved. So for example, if the site gets a lot less density, there's a lot less land value to cover demo costs. Right now, we think we're at a reasonable place on that. But that equates to roughly $125,000 to $145,000 per townhome lot. And just as a comparable, EYA purchased townhome lots from the Josephites, the seminary building right across the street, for $104,000. And that site did not require demolition. That site did not require major infrastructure. That site did not require any proffers beyond what you would expect. And so certainly, we believe that our townhome value that we've offered to Providence is a fair market value. And we think the appraisals, we know the appraisals will hold that up because they already have. Okay, almost done. And so what that means is potential land value is $32 million. The demo costs are $29.5. So even before paying for any infrastructure, already about $2 million of land value, and then you layer in $15.4 million of infrastructure and park costs, and we're at a negative land value of about $13 million. We believe we'll make that $13 million up, whether it's working with the city on grants for infrastructure or whether it is modifying our plan and coming up with a way to make that up. But this is certainly not some rich deal where the developers make a ton of money. This is the type of deal you should do in community development where you get a ton of affordable housing, public benefits, and parks for the community in return for redevelopment of a site. And so that, I'll close on that. Happy to answer any questions you may have, but I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Someone should have put someone else in charge of the timing. That was 18 minutes, but hopefully that was informative. Okay, thank you all for your patience and your willingness to engage in this process. We'll open it up for comments soon. I'll pass it over to my colleague Aaron, who has a list of people who are RSVP'd for this meeting and said that they would like to speak today at this hearing. But after we've gotten a chance to hear from those folks, we'll open it up for anyone. You didn't have to RSVP to be able to speak today. We'll just go in order. And when you step up to the mic, I would just ask that you say your first name. It helps us keep track of who's speaking. And if you could say, you know, if you have a question for the developers, you can also let us know. All right? All right?
Good evening, everyone. If you can hear me, can you just raise your hand? All right, I see raised hands. People in the back, can I raise your hand? There we go. I just need to do a little bit of movement. I'm a former educator, and I can't say former, current educator, because it's really important to have some interaction. My name is Aaron Jenkins. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for the Office of the Attorney General. We have an hour and five minutes left, and we want to dedicate that time to community, to hear your thoughts, to hear your questions, and to hear your testimony. So as my colleague shared, we have eight people who have signed up to give testimony. And in the previous presentation for testimonies, we asked people to keep it to three minutes. We're going to give you an extra minute if you need it. But I really want to stress to those giving public testimony that there's a chance to give written testimony as well. I really want to stress that since we have so many people in the room and because we have the developers here, there may be interest to ask questions. So what I'm going to do is two things. One, when I call you up for your testimony, I'm going to call up the entire list so you can hear your name, that you know you're signed up to testify, and you're going to come to the mic, give your testimony, and you can take your seat. And then the other thing I want to share is that if you have questions, after the testimony period, we can go to the questions, and normally we do that three at a time. So you can come to the microphone, line up, ask your question, and then take a seat. As was shared, because this is public record and we have a stenographer keeping track, I need you to say your first and last name. My first name is Aaron, Ern, or A-A-Ron, depending on your pronunciation and cultural background. So that would be A-A-R-O-N, last name Jenkins. For other Jenkins in the audience who may be related, J-E-N-K-I-N-S. So you'll say your first and last name and spell it. No commentary needed in between, I just wanted to lighten the mood. After you give your first and last name for those testifying, please give your testimony and then take your seat. We really just want to maximize this hour we have together so that in addition to the testimony, if there are questions, we can take them. Is that all right? All right, thank you. So I'm going to give you the names of those people that have signed up to testify. Again, you don't have to move yet, but I just want to let you know that you're in the queue. And then I'm going to ask the first person to come up, and the next person, if you can be ready to come up. So that's Andreas Chongki Torres is our first witness. The second is Rodney Foxworth. The third is Calvin Gurley. The fourth is Emily Lucio. The fifth is Peter Simpler. The sixth is Natasha Thompson. The seventh is Lorenz Wheatley. And the final registered testimony is Daniel Golden Wolke. And excuse any butchering in my decolonized, colonized tongue of your name, if I mispronounce it, I apologize. So I want to ask Mr. Andreas Chongki Torres to come up, and then I'm going to ask Rodney Foxworth to be ready to go after him. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the Office of the Attorney General to provide this opportunity. My name is Andres Chongki Torres, A-N-D-R-E-S, last name C-H-O-N-G hyphen Ch- space T-O-D-O-R-E-S. I live in the corner of Buchanan and 12th Street, and I've had the pleasure of speaking to several EYA representatives, as well as our public servants, our ANC members, our commissioners, deputy mayors, and I'll speak to the mayor later this month as well. Our neighbors are deeply concerned. I have a three-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old. We're concerned about air pollution, we're concerned about the asbestos and the lead that will come out of the destruction of those buildings, we're concerned about traffic. It is clear to me that, you know, there's still many things that we have to walk through. All the weight of the traffic is going to fall on 12th and Buchanan. If you guys have the traffic through there as you take your kids to school, you will realize that 500 additional units, or whatever it is that we're trying to do, is going to have a crazy impact, right, a heavy impact on traffic on 12th Street, which is met by South Dakota, one traffic light and one stop sign as well on 12th and Buchanan. And we, as of yet, have seen any additional plans to cover the end of Buchanan Street for perhaps another outlet on the back or Varner for that matter. Another deep concern that we have is that as we're addressing green spaces, I don't want this to feel like it's a favor that they're doing to us. The community is tight. We have 80-year-olds, we have little kids in here that walk around there and play. We don't want a Port Totten fiasco where they built all the way to the edge, right? It's a concrete jungle, all right, diagonal from Chick-fil-A and Walmart in front of Walmart. We don't want that, right? And we want to make sure that the green spaces that are allotted to us, I had a conversation with them, it kind of saddens me that they didn't add any of the, you know, things that we discussed, you know, on both sides of, behind my house. I was expecting an addition there for the recess space and park space that we discussed with EYA. But that is just a result of how difficult these conversations are going to be, just like you guys said, not everybody's opinion is going to be taken into consideration. So the neighbors were concerned, right, about that process. Not everybody has the time perhaps to go and meet, you know, and relay these thoughts. So I urge you guys to think deeply about what happened already with the EYA construction of this Josephite Park, which is tiny, doesn't cover, you know, what the neighborhoods need in terms of green spaces. We don't want to repeat those same mistakes. And even though EYA has a good desire to develop, we're not against development, but we do want to make sure that we're taking into consideration, once again, to recap, our environment, the air that our kids are breathing, the traffic impact that is going to have in our communities, the health impact that is going to have on our seniors and kids, as well as the concrete jungle itself. Like, these things need to be addressed directly. And I trust the Attorney General's Office leadership on all the other legal aspects of the sale. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that testimony. The next person that we have to testify is Mr. Rodney Foxworth, but just had a correction, so I apologize, we had another person to testify. So coming after Mr. Foxworth would be Mr. Gordon Andrew Fletcher, ANC 5A. And then I'll go back to my list. We also had someone to remove, so we'll make sure that we catch that. So Mr. Andrew Fletcher, excuse me. Yes. No, no, Mr. Foxworth, you can, please begin.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Attorney General Office, Attorney General Squad's office, and thanks for the opportunity to share our concerns regarding the proposed sale of Providence Hospital. I'm Rodney Foxworth. I'm advisor to the Ward Five Leadership Council and this Economic Development Committee. The council is composed of leaders in Ward Five who are business owners, civic association presidents, ANC commissioners, nonprofits, and other longtime activists. It provides businesses and residents in Ward Five, I'm sorry, it provides advices, sorry, it provides advice regarding DC public policy, programs, and resources to elected officials, city agencies, businesses, and residents in Ward Five that improves the ward's quality of life in Providence Hospital's in Ward Five. This Economic Development Committee provides advice regarding DC economic development policy, programs, and resources to the same group that improves economic opportunity for all. We strongly reject the proposed sale of the hospital for a dollar. For decades, DC has invested millions of public dollars into the hospital, that's millions of public dollars into the hospital, which created public financial equity. To sell the hospital for a dollar ignores the public equity that DC has in the hospital. We propose that if sold, significant portions of the proceeds, that public equity that I talked about, is used to create the Providence Hospital Foundation to continue providing critical services to neighborhoods formerly served by the hospital. There are many nonprofit hospitals across the country that have been sold to for-profit businesses where the hospital used substantial proceeds from the sale to fund hospital foundations. And I'll give you a few examples. In Marion, South Carolina, where the Marion County Healthcare Foundation was composed of the sale of a former Mullins Hospital where I'm from, and the Marion Hospital as well. That combined organization, which again is the Marion County Healthcare Foundation, provides funds for access to quality healthcare, workforce, economic development, and improvements in public education. I'll give you another example. In Shaker Heights, Ohio, where the St. Louis Foundation, St. Louis was formerly a hospital, provides funds to local nonprofits for research and public advocacy, operational expenses, and capital improvements. Those hospitals knew that a hospital foundation was the best way to give back long-term, and I stress long-term, to the civilian residents who sustained them with public funding and regulatory support for deficits, not counting the infrastructure monies that those municipalities spent to support those hospitals as well. And for Providence Hospital, that's been almost 186 years since they've been in existence. So you can imagine the amount of public investment, infrastructure types of vehicles and otherwise that the hospital has received. So we propose significant funds from the suggested sale or use to create and support long-term a Providence Hospital Foundation with community participation at all levels, a small business center providing services to African-American women and minority-owned businesses. We part, that includes developing and managing successful businesses with convening training space for businesses, city agencies, developers, and residents. It can also serve as a business incubator and to offer the services below. It includes healthcare, education, and advocacy, providing services to seniors, low-income residents, healthcare planning, mental health servicing, financing, DC resources, paying for bills, et cetera. And the last thing we should include is financial literacy education, providing services to the same group regarding creating healthcare and financial power of attorney documents, wills, advice on home purchases, foreclosure prevention and assistance, reverse mortgages, et cetera. In closing, we strongly reject the proposed sale of the hospital for a dollar. For decades, DC has invested millions of public dollars into Providence Hospital. That public equity, that public equity must be used to fund the items noticed in our testimony. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I'm available with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Foxworth. And just for notice, and I'll turn it over to my colleague, who has a comment, this list is in alphabetical order, so it's not in order of background or stance. So just a reminder, if you please come to the microphone to testify, please say your first and last name. And if you hold an official title, whether elected office, community association, please share that as well. Please.
I just wanted to say thank you for your written comments. Well, we'll keep them. And again, I just want to remind everyone that we have materials here at the front to get free without, you know, interrupting the public testimony. You can feel free to get them out at the end of the year.
Thank you very much. We next have Gordon Andrew Fletcher, and then Calvin Gurley.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Gordon Andrew Fletcher. I'm proud to serve as a Chair of ANC 5A, former two-term Ward Five Democrats Chairman, and most importantly, a very much dedicated community member of this neighborhood and the entire 5A area. I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to testify this evening. I'm in my fourth term as the ANC Commissioner, so growing up in this community, I've seen a lot of community benefits occur, I've seen community wins, I've seen community losses. And so I'm hoping that this will be a community win for everyone. I do want to reiterate that as Chair of ANC 5A, EYA, Evan, others have been very consistent in terms of community engagement. Every time we've called upon Providence Hospital, really EYA to come and discuss the development, they have done so. So I will say that first and foremost, I appreciate that. Providence Hospital has served many DC residents, especially those in Ward Five, Seven, and Eight, as they traditionally provided critical care services to low-income people of color and elderly Medicaid and Medicare patients. So when it comes to if and when Providence is sold, I'm not going to go back and forth with that. We are on record, going back to 2018, opposing the closure of Providence Hospital for numerous reasons. One, in particular, servicing urgent care patients in this area as well as east of the river. However, if and when Providence Hospital is sold, and you continue to listen here from many organizations in this room and individuals outside of this room, I ask that you really focus on four recommendations from me. Two of them I saw on the screen, which I appreciate. First, let's make sure that we ensure that development is consistent with the makeup, the fabric of the community. Meaning, let's make sure it looks like the community currently has. This is very much the traditional, family-oriented community, where things that look out of place don't sit well with community members that have been here all their lives and for many, many years. So consistent makeup, fabric, or whatever development is going to occur, let's make sure that that happens. Consistency, that's first. Second, I saw on the screen, and I appreciate Evan and all of you talking about potential for a coffee shop. We like coffee shops. Coffee shops have came to the community. I've seen great coffee shops. However, we need more. We need a sit-down restaurant where both family members, individuals, older residents can congregate and hang out in their own neighborhood. So while I appreciate the coffee shop, let's expand that thinking into some form of sit-down restaurant. Next, I do want to echo the comments from the person that spoke before me, Mr. Rodney Foxworth, somebody that I know is a dedicated community member as well. I do support the Providence Hospital Foundation. It is something that will continue to help residents who have been connected to the community and have formerly served the hospital, you know, by going there for decades and decades, regardless of their income, especially for those that cannot afford the new housing that's proposed. Hospitals across the country do use local community foundations they created as a way of giving back. And as I first started out my testimony, a lot of development that does come to our community is a two-way street, right? Community benefits that the community can benefit from, lack a better term, for years to come. So I do support the Providence Hospital Foundation. And then lastly, I want to double down on the need for an urgent care, an imaging center, because again, this neighborhood has both older residents, young families, so geriatric care, pediatric care, and everything in between for an intergenerational community is very much needed. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you again. This is a wonderful community, and I hope that you're truly taking and listening to the testimony and taking the feedback back to those that can make decisions. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Can you just spell your name for us, first and last name?
Absolutely. Gordon G., I'm Jordan, G-O-R-D-O-N hyphen Andrew, that's my full first name, blame my grandma, A-N-D-R-E-W, Lee's my middle name, L-E-E Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. Thanks for coming out. There's a nice crowd here. My name is Calvin Gurley, G-U-R-L-E-Y. I'm the President of the Tacoma Civic Association and former President of the Fairmont Civic Association in Anacostia Southeast. This has to be repeated and repeated again. Providence Hospital should not close, and it needs to be reopened. I request the Mayor and the Chairman of the Council and Council members to withdraw the sale of Providence Hospital. Based on the following, area hospitals are overburdened by the number of patients to examine and treat for illnesses and preventive care. Area hospitals are understaffed, and there is a serious life and death shortage of nurses, especially for this city of 700,000-plus residents. The wait to have a doctor service a patient in need of medical attention is approximately five to eight hours wait time. Recently, my aunt suffered a sudden stroke and was taken to DC Washington Hospital Center, where she laid on the gurney on the side of the hallway, right there on the wall. She laid there for seven hours before being treated. When open, Providence Hospital already availability of approximately 345 beds. Currently now, DC Journal is closed and Greater Southeastern Hospital is closed. Now the cost, it's always the cost of the council. To cover the cost of reopening Providence Hospital, the Council should and must reappropriate funds to the hospital from the current funding of the Fell H Street trolley car operations, which operates at $20 million annually. That's my testimony, and thank you very much.
Mr. Gurley, can you come back and spell your first name for me, please?
Calvin, C-A-L-V-I-N.
Thank you, sir. I didn't mean to cut off applause. Next, we have Commissioner Emily Lucio, and then followed by Peter Simpler, excuse me, Simpler. Excuse me, Semler.
Good evening. I'm a little shorter than these guys. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. First, I'm going to ask your indulgence as ANC commissioner for this single-member district. It's probably going to take me a minute or two longer. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about the pending sale of Providence Hospital. My name is Emily, E-M-I-O-Y, Singer, S-I-N-G-E-R, Lucio, L-U-C-I-O, and I'm ANC commissioner for 503, which is the single-member district where Providence Hospital sits. I have lived in this neighborhood for 17 years and have seen many changes. Just over four and a half years ago, Providence shared their plan with the public to close the hospital. I want to be clear that many in our community, including me, opposed this decision because we strongly felt that our community deserves to have a local medical center to care for our known and emergent medical needs. In part, because of our voracious, vociferous objections to close the hospital, Providence promised to remain open but with limited services, including an imaging center and urgent care center. While this decision was not fully satisfying, Providence's leadership promised the community that the hospital would continue to develop plans to provide additional medical services within its Healthy Village Concept Plan and a phased approach. However, over the last four and a half years, despite Providence's representatives promising new medical uses for the hospital, none of those plans came to fruition. Many in this community have lost trust because of their empty promises provided by Providence and are deeply disappointed that we are where we are right now with the status of Providence Hospital, as was just stated in the last testimony. Our community is tired of the empty promises that Providence continually provided about the status of the phased approach to revitalizing medical care on this property. Providence has claimed that the COVID-19 crisis created irreparable limitations to sustaining the urgent care center, which makes the strain on the operating budget of the hospital unsustainable. I would say that the COVID-19 crisis was the perfect example of why a medical care center in the Northeast section of Ward 5 is necessary. Providence is where many in our community received their COVID shots and boosters, including myself. We are very disappointed that Providence has not done more to promote their services to the community. It was also unfortunate that they did not take the advice I heard repeated at several meetings to bring pediatric services to the urgent care, which have served the growing number of families to this area of Ward 5. At this point, despite the fact that some people in the community were upset when the hospital closed many years ago, the majority of the community would like to see the old hospital demolished and a new development move forward. We are tired of the promises that Providence has made over these last five years, but the reality is that we are where we are. However, now that the decision has been made, our community wants to continue to have input into how this space will be used. Therefore, as part of this project, improving the quality of the existing medical office space, which is scheduled to stay, should also be a priority for the developer. In addition, there are four things I would say are most important to the ANC and the community that must be addressed with the pending sale of Providence Hospital. Number one, green space. The residents who have moved here over the years have come because of the open green space. It will be critical for them to ensure this property is more than just a development. Number two, low-density housing. As was done with other recent new developments in the area, it will be important for the developers to ensure that the density and height is appropriate for this neighborhood. Medical services. With the loss of the hospital, the imaging center, and the urgent care, having an urgent care returned to the property is critically important. Again, I want to share that having a focus on pediatric care as well as geriatric care to serve our elderly residents who continue to live in their own homes in this area are essential components. And finally, retail. While the property is not currently zoned for retail, many of our neighbors have expressed interest in a small coffee shop, grocery, or other food establishment. With the proposed new development, it is important for the developers to be sensitive to the density and the scale of this community as it exists today, while at the same time ensuring that there will be a high level of affordable housing and open space. Given the fact that previous developments in this area have not only met but exceeded the affordable housing minimum requirements, I would hope that the same would be true for this project. Finally, I do want to mention that this project abuts another development that is going up in the neighborhood. The Joseph P. Kennedy School located at 801 Buchanan Street is very close to breaking ground on a new school and 80 new townhomes. Because this project moved faster than Providence, I do believe that we missed a huge opportunity to work together with the plans for both projects to provide shared open space and connecting streets that provide for better traffic calming measures throughout the neighborhood. I will say that as the ANC commissioner, I was able to negotiate an agreement between Ascension and Catholic Charities to ensure that they would provide green space that included a sports field, dog park, and play area, as was mentioned in the presentation. While this was a step in the right direction, I do believe more could have been done had the plans been along the same timeline. If it is not too late, I would urge DDOT to look at both these projects together to ensure safe and reasonable plans are made to direct the increased flow of traffic that will come with these two new developments. In closing, the development team has been working with the ANC and the community for the past six months. We have continued to see them present their ideas at community meetings and with individual groups of residents upon request. This community has been waiting a long time for this project. While we are not thrilled with the loss of the green space or in some cases the hospital and many of the medical services, we are anxious to have this project move forward, and we do want to see the development, we do not want to see the development delayed any further. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to present to you this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. And I just, I see that some people have written notes. I encourage everyone to submit your written comments, even if you're speaking here today. We appreciate that. Oh, and the materials that we had here outside, I think that's better so people can pick them up and wander away out.
Thank you very much. No problem. Peter Semler, you're next. And then following Peter, we have two more persons for the public testimony portion, and then we're happy to use the remaining time for any questions that may be had in the community. Peter.
Yeah, hi. My name is Peter Semler. I'm a fourth-generation native of Brookland and Northeast, and I'm also owner, founder of a financial news service. So my question is basically, the basics of any kind of transaction of this sort. We're so fortunate to have Brian Schwab, who was not only a Harvard Law Director, he was a managing partner of one of the global law firms of the United States, Anna Baldwin, originally in Baltimore. And in this case of the $1 payment for this historic property, it was chartered by Abraham Lincoln, I believe, and I think we had a lot of issues, federal and local issues during the history, federal dollars involved, so this is not a very clear-cut transaction. The first question is, in a transaction like this, it is normal, best practice, and okay, I think legally required to have at least three bidders for a property, so people like us would know which, who's bidding what. That is a very basic requirement, and so, did you have three bidders, and did the Attorney General ask to see the bids? And there can be no secrecy in this process because this is a non-private-to-private transaction. This is a non-for-profit selling for a for-profit, therefore, there can be no nondisclosure secrecy or any kind of confidentiality in the agreement. It has to be all above board, so I would ask that we reopen the process and that us residents, maybe we can have a referendum, just a Ward 5 referendum, the vote on this at some point. We have elections in the next year or so, and I see the Providence. Also, another issue is, we would like to have the names and all the documents of the independent valuations of this property. Since we have some of the leading banks like J.P. Morgan, Bryan Mayer, and some of the biggest law firms, we'd like this to be rebooted by a law firm and a bank who has some reputation to lose, you know, somebody who cannot cut corners. This is a very serious deal. I mean, at my valuation, I'm just doing a back, it's already worth $138 million. That was the write-off that the session gave to this property, but we're talking about a $138 million property, just for the start. And I mean, that's only real fact and figures we have. And thirdly, and this is very important, we need the names and list of all the board members of the Providence Hospital Foundation. You know, the more transparent we are, the more that we can feel that we're so sure there's no self-dealing. I gather the first person who would want to do that is the foundation, because that's both a D.C. criminal act and a federal criminal act under law. So that's what we ask is, you know, we're Ward 5, many of us are lawyers, many of us work for the DOJ, you know, Andrew Fletcher ran for the council membership, he lives in the building next door. So we just want transparency, and we're not, you know, we just, we didn't get off the, whatever, the Ferris wheel yesterday. You know, we have people here who are veterans of the generation, so we just want transparency, and I think we can demand that from our elected official, Attorney General Schwab. Thank you.
Mr. Semler, can you spell your name for the record, please?
Yeah, S.E.M.L.E.R. Thank you. And this is on the record, correct? So this is public? Okay, thanks. So the Security Exchange Commission, everybody else, thank you.
As I shared before, we have two more public testimony witnesses, and then we can circle back for the questions. I know there were questions that were asked, so I have to circle back. We have Mr. Lorenz Wheatley, and then following Mr. Wheatley, we have Daniel Golden Walcott.
Good evening. Just for full disclosure, I've had intimate, sort of an intimate relationship with EYA. I was a pro se sole litigant for the development at the Josephite Seminary. I was propositioned a buyout to drop the case. There was another group in the neighborhood who did have a nondisclosure agreement and was compensated for whatever fees they paid. I refused because as a 32-plus-year resident, I wasn't interested in their proposition to buy me out. That said, I'm opposed to this sale because, for one thing, just, I'm a bit surprised that we're even here because I understand there were two other hearings that were online. I had little or no indication about that, but one of my neighbors, she alerted me to this, and I'm very happy that we're having this. And before this is all over, I'm suggesting that we even have another meeting based on just some of the other comments, the fact that, like the gentleman just before me said, there should have been at least two or three other bidders on this proposed sale. When I got off the office of the Attorney General's website, it was some case law, D.C. Code, and as I was going through this litigation with EYA over the Josephite Seminary property, and someone was talking about density already, they have, what, 80 townhouses there, now they've proposed, what, 300 residents? But I had asked the question, why, I mean, do you have anyone working with Providence Hospital? And they said they had them in an advisory capacity. Now I know that they were actually on the board. So just by one of your D.C. Code laws comes into question, is there any undue influence or, you know, just representation, conflicts, potential conflicts of interests or personal profit, you know, of course with corporations, corporations of peoples, I don't know how that works out. But that said, yeah, I'm opposed to this, and there's also some other issues at hand. There's a rumor, and I hate to put anybody on the spot, there's also a charter school behind this property, Mundo Verde, and I was told that that was sold by Providence. I'm not sure if EYA had a hand in it, and I'm not even sure if my SMD representative had a hand in it. So I'm going to be asking the question either here, now, or during questioning. It was alleged, and I'd rather just hear it from the sole sources themselves, if there was any nondisclosure agreement about that between a public official about a sale from Providence to a charter school. And I would think that needs to be at least addressed. And so, those are about the general things. When I was going through this whole litigation with EYA, there was concern with the cut-through from Webster, the east side of the development to the west side to 12th Street. The issue was, well, that's going to open up right in front of the emergency entrance. And they said that was not going to be any big deal, and that kind of tells me they already knew something was going to be happening with this whole disposition of the property. Matter of fact, maybe back in 2015, 2016, there was some information about this development as it's being proposed today, but it wasn't disclosed as to who it was, but it sounds, it looks very similar to what's being offered today. And we had a group of people meeting at the then Ramon Riggs Library right there on South Dakota Avenue. So I think this whole thing precedes even the sale of Providence Hospital. But to that point, I know you said that the sale of Providence Hospital is said and done, and yet you talk about just the land value, but because it had all these other assets, medical equipment and things of that nature, is there any record of that in terms of how that was disposed of? Because it's not just land. And yes, I'm glad Mr. Foxworth suggested that we have a foundation, and we have a critical health need in this city, and even Ms. Lucio talked about the COVID thing. And I'm not sure if just an urgent care center would be adequate. The city has funds that could easily take over this and maybe even proffer, let's say, to either Georgetown or MedStar the open of a satellite campus. Because my wife died at Providence Hospital in hospice, but she was initially taken to MedStar, and she too had to stay in the hallway of a gurney, but that was back in 2005. And when I heard someone talk about someone in their family having had a stroke, and this must have been more recent, it, to me, it's just obvious that they're going to have a more critical need. With all this density, increased volume of residents, and it just seems that there doesn't seem to be any kind of a counter response to, or some kind of assessment, impact of what that may mean to the health and safety of our citizens and particularly the legacy residents. So I know my testimony has been somewhat impromptu, but I appreciate your time and attention. My name is Lorenz Wheatley, L-O-R-E-N, as in Nancy, Z, Wheatley, W-H-E-A-T-L-E-Y. I used to be a head start of honors, and I would tell people, if you forget my name, think of wheat bread, but don't call me that, otherwise your toast will be kind of crummy. No matter how you slice it, you can't butter it up. So don't vote on the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheatley. We have our last witness, Daniel Walcott. After Mr. Walcott even comes to the microphone goes, just show of hands, if you have anyone interested in asking questions. Okay, I see hands that are raised. All right, so as soon as we have this testimony, we want to call up the questions three at a time so that we can hear the questions in succession, and then we can make sure that you're heard. Also, Mark, if you can come to the front to help, I appreciate it.
My name is Daniel Golden Walcott, environmental activist, activist for nine years to save MacMillan Park, which EYA stole from the public of D.C. The public land was surplus to EYA and Vision MacMillan Partners, the biggest land theft since the Dutch stole Manhattan from the Lenape for 60 guilders and a bag of trinkets. I'm with the committee for MacMillan Park Conservancy. Where is a ballot referendum for the people to make these decisions? We have 13 council members who are incumbent hacks. The council members are corrupt. They are an international embarrassment. They have been investigated by federal prosecutors. If you lived in Maryland, you'd have 140 representatives and two houses. We have 13 incumbent hacks, and the election of them repeatedly, repeatedly is a farce. The District of Columbia is the richest government in the world. Why can't we buy Providence for a park for our city? Why make another urban heat island? Why does this Attorney General not protecting our public health? Why? We need to save Howard University for an urban forest and dedicate it to Tony, Howard University Divinity School, 23 wooded acres, a perfect park, we should be saving it. It could be Tony Morrison Woods to dedicate it to Tony Morrison. The trees at the metro are being threatened by development. McDuffie promised that would be preserved. He lied. He's part of the corruption. The beautiful grove of trees that cool off the metro for us and give us a natural break to the railroad in the middle of the night? Public trust is where officials must respect the public trust. They're not protecting us. They're increasing the heat of urban. They're increasing the urban heat island program. They're walling us in with development. Any city government not corrupt would be thrilled to deliver parks and recreation to its residents. But they colluded with EYA insider developers to steal MacMillan, 25 acres of public land. They held it back with fences for 37 years so that the black population could not enjoy their integrated park, the civil rights cultural site, MacMillan Park. They're turning it into a monstrosity of 50 development, 50 buildings. Zoning was watered down, comp plan was revised. Now the mayor has proposed new rules to limit community engagement, which we know these meetings are a fraud. You show us how anybody here is going to have a change in this plan. Show it. Write it down. The new mayor proposed new rules to limit community engagement in housing developments. Limiting community engagement. So what are we doing here? The zoning commission approved it. I sat through and watched the zoning commission corrupt MacMillan over and over again. Subordinate agencies supposedly evaluate and regulatory are working for the developers when public-private partnerships are being evaluated. They're evaluating their own employer, the boss, okay? Against community opposition, developers will be permitted to evade the agreements they negotiate on public amenities without any public hearings. So the zoning commission is fixing things for the development. Duh! Legalized, so that's legalized fraud and lying. The developers can lie through their face, promise to do things for the community, get these st- Theft! These deals, these land deals are theft! There are cities that don't have surplus. There are cities that don't do these $1 deals. Oh, so they're going to demolish the building, so some contractor will get $70 million in demolishing the building. We know. We fought MacMillan monstrosity for nine years. I personally brought a federal case to Judge Maita, who we made famous, now he's famous for Trump. A case that, the deed for MacMillan had covenants assigned by federal GSA. We had a generous lawyer, former DOJ, 25-year attorney, write a case that the EYA development of MacMillan violated federal covenants incorporated in the deed when the district bought MacMillan for $9.3 million.
Mr. Wolkopf, I'm going to cut you off, but you reached your time in additional time.
Oh, okay.
Would you mind coming to the table?
Okay, the Attorney General has to be part of the corruption, plain and simple. If the Attorney General wasn't part of the corruption, it wouldn't work. Okay, that's why they're here, conniving us to believe that they're going to get a good deal for the public. That is absurd. Our public health is harmed by the way they're overdeveloping the district. It is the most money in the world for development, okay? And they are walling us in with development. They are depriving us of parks and places for future amenities to be put down, for schools, for hospitals, for community centers. They're selling us out. They're selling us out. That's their job.
Mr. Wolkopf, thank you. Would you mind spelling your name for the record? Would you mind spelling your name for the record, please? Thank you.
My name is Daniel Wolkopf, D-A-N-I-E-L-G-O-L-D-O-N-W-O-L-K-O-F-F. Call me to continue our activism against this fraud, 202-232-8391. Come on, Brookland, you can't have these people crapping all over you anymore.
Thank you very much. So here's what we're going to do. We have 20 minutes remaining to meet our 8 p.m. close. We want to respect everyone's time because I know that we have young people that are here, as well as seniors. I see your hand. Mr. Wolkopf, I'll make sure we get over to you. So Marcus here in the yellow, he's going to bring the microphone to those who have questions. We're going to ask, we keep our questions to a minute because there are many people that want to ask questions. We're going to invite EYA and the people that were upfront, if you want to come back up in case your question is directed towards you, so we can answer as quickly as possible. So for the panelists that were here before, if you can come back up. If you have a question, if you know who you want to direct it towards, if it's the OAG or if it's towards any of the ones that present it, please state that. I want to ask again, in the interest of time, I see your hand up, Mr. Foxworth. We're going to try to get to those people who did not have a chance to speak because we have those who did not have a chance to testify. So we're going to start on this side, we're going to work our way over to get to as many questions as possible. I'm going to ask if you can please keep it to a minute, and we're going to try to keep our responses short so we can get to as many as possible. Is that all right? All right, please start with the first question, and we'll keep going. And again, for the record, please state your name and spell it as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Edward M. Johnson. It is spelled E-D-W-A-R-D, middle initial M is man, last name Johnson. I am an architect, urban planner, zoning consultant. I've had a practice in Ward 5 for over 40 years. Before I ask a question, I have to make this observation for this audience. Land development is the primary source of economic development in this country. Every kind of job, every kind of contract that you can imagine, when they're being planned, when they're being built, and when people begin to move in, just enormous contracts. Now, the problem is, many of these projects that have developed are not reinforcing the economic base in the communities where they are being developed. I'm a part of the Ward 5 Coalition, which is comprised of a lot of black firms. There's been no discussion of supporting any of these black firms. Mr. Goldman talked about minorities. In this city, minority does not reply to us when it comes to our expenditures. This came from a DC official. The distribution of contracts in the city, whites first, Lebanese, Iranians, East Indians, Asians, Hispanics, et cetera. Councilman McDuffie just did a disparity study because so many of us raised hell about the fact that we're not getting any business. Of the billions of dollars that are spent in contracts in this city, Councilman McDuffie's disparity study, which he stated in a presentation via Zoom about six weeks ago, that the distribution of wealth of blacks in this city is about 2%, which is nothing, nothing. What we want, Mr. Goldman and his team, to commit is what you're going to spend with African-American firms, not minorities. Because minorities are not us, and we're not getting, this is ridiculous. I've been in business in Ward 5 for 50 years. None of your people ever knocked on my door. I've done all kinds of planning projects, national planning projects. The point is, this needs to change. If we're going to have a city where there is diversity and there is growth, then we need some equity. We need some fairness with black firms. I don't want to hear about these other people.
Mr. Johnson, sorry to cut you off, but your fellow citizens have questions.
I have 3612, 12th Street Northeast. My phone number is 5263610. That needs to change. We just had a meeting with all our folks. And they said, look, you want to make a difference, and oh, in terms of-
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, did you have a question?
Oh, my question is, how are you going to document that you are spending serious funds with African-American firms, not minorities?
Who's that director of sports? I'm sorry.
That's my question.
Who's that director of sports?
Oh, Mr. Goldman.
Thank you. EYA.
EYA, EYA. How are you going to demonstrate that fact?
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to see you, Eddie.
Not minority. We don't want to hear about minority.
Yeah, so we are working on, we've been asked the same question by your council member who we're working with on this issue, by the ANC as well, and something we care about as well. Our equity partner on the project and our partner on the project, Nikiti, is one of the largest African-American-owned businesses in the city. They're based in Ward 5, as you probably know, and they have a lot of experience in this as well. So we will have a plan that will be part of the properties of our development and our PUD. And that will go through the process by which we make sure we're inclusive in our bidding and inclusive in the people that are working on the site. Thank you. Yeah, that's what the PUDs are.
Thank you very much. We have the next question. Please remember your first and last name, if you can spell it as well, and then your question.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Williams. I'm the president of North Michigan Park Civic Association. I have both a comment and a question. The comment that I have is, we keep identifying this as Providence, and the actual owner is Ascension. Ascension is one of the largest healthcare facilities in the United States. My question to them is, how come you could not make Providence work? I've been on this process since the very beginning when Providence was sold to Ascension. We had the issue with the Josephite across the street. But with Providence Hospital, you all came in like in the middle of the night and decided you were going to close out the hospital. You realize months later that that was an issue, that it was not done correctly, which is why we're at the point where we are today with going to the OAG's office and other agencies. Being the largest healthcare facility, I don't understand why you couldn't make Providence work. That's my first question. The second one is for Evan with EYA. Will the property be, the facility be private, the land is private or public? Because that will depend on how folks can enter and exit off of that property.
Yep, you'll respond.
The second question is, is the land private or public? Is that right, Carmen?
Yes.
All right, and that's for Evan.
So I'll hit that first, and I'll hand it over to the Providence team for your first question. Yeah, so the land itself will be private. We don't know yet if the roads and sidewalks will be public. That's something that, you know, DDOT and the city also planning a way in during the PUD process to tell us whether they're public or private. Whether they're public or private, the streets, the sidewalks, all the park spaces, everything we're designing will have public access statements on them, so that they'll be essentially open to the public. We will have the right, you know, when it gets dark, to close them so that there's not people, you know, gathering in the park after hours that the community may not want. That's one of the issues we hear from the community regularly about noise. But they will essentially act like public spaces, yes. And that's similar to the Josephite, you know, the playground we built there where that's open, you know, to the general public, really without almost any restrictions, so very similar to that concept.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Questions? To Ascension, why couldn't you make Providence work? Is that right, Carmen?
Yeah, I think for the question and your concern, it really came down to a simple matter of economics for us that we just did not have the use to support the services that were there, most recently the urgent care and the diagnostic imaging. And I'm sure folks are very familiar with the services there, but we just did not have the traffic on an ongoing basis that would support a need to keep those businesses open. The hospital, in a similar fashion, the hospital too, there was a reference to the number of beds that were open when it was functional several years ago. At the end, we were running a census much lower than that, and I think well under 100 beds were occupied on a routine basis. And again, going back to simple economics, that just is not feasible, given that structural utilization.
Thank you very much. We have the next question. First and last name, spelling and question.
Thomas Maxwell, T-H-O-M-A-S-M-A-X-W-E-L-L. Born and raised right here in Ward 5, born in 1965 over on Hamlin Street. And I have a couple of questions and I have a couple of complaints that-
Do you mind if I get your questions and then complaints we can do after when we close?
Well, I think we all let me get the complaints out first because they fall up with the question. Okay, so here's what it is. Based on Mrs. Johnson was talking about, how the developers in this community has not got the fair share of it. Mr. Gordon, I remember when he first moved in the neighborhood. Factually, I helped them, pushed them to buy the house that he's in. So I'm always trying to help the community in a lot of areas. Now Providence, I've been working over there since 2000, doing a lot of infrastructure sidewalks, replacement of asphalt, and different things around the hospital when they were doing all the renovations. I have different reasons, feelings how they shouldn't have closed the hospital because we need it in this community. But my biggest complaint is, all of these developers marching here and they whack down the contracts. They say they want to talk with you, they'll give you their card, blow smoke. Then they go on, then they're bringing all these developers and all these other contractors from Virginia, Maryland. Nobody's giving back in the community. You know, we've tried to work with them, but they're not being fair. So that's my complaint. I don't know about with the development. I want to see growth. But I think the tape is not being spread fairly. That starts with the mayor's office and everybody else down there on that council. I don't even, I don't even try to even deal with them because their word is not their bond. See, I grew, when I raised up in this community, your word meant something to people. You tell somebody something, they respect for you to keep your word. The most of them council members, they get on that council down there, they ain't got time to meet with you. As long as they're on, when they're on the campaign, they want to talk to you. They want to talk. When they get in office, they go another way. And I think that's been the biggest problem in this community and the city council and the mayor's office. I mean, I love the mayor, but we're not being fair. They're not being fed back to the constituents. So that's basically what I have a problem with.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So we're going to keep going through. I don't think there was a question there, but thank you for your comment. We have this young lady, the gentleman in the back, and I think the young lady to my right in the white. Yes, please. First and last name, spelling and question.
Hi, my name is Carla Perkins. It's K-A-R-L-A, Perkins, P-E-R-K-I-N-S. Just a real quick question. I just wanted to say to the Office of Attorney General, thank you for being here. I've only been in Ward 5 for five years, so I'm naive enough to think that this is a real process. Thank you. My question, Evan has addressed it in a hearing that, in a meeting that he has held, I asked the same question. But I would employ the Attorney General to really study to see if this is an arms-length transaction. I asked EYA if they had any Board of Directors, any members from their firm on Ascension's Board of Directors. And Evan told me during her meeting that their CFO was on Ascension's Board of Directors. That right there raises red flags for me. It should raise red flags for the Attorney General. And so I just want to just bring that to your attention again and implore you to please explore that issue relative to price and whether or not this is a fair price, if they had someone on their, on Ascension's board. I know Evan is going to say their CFO was not part of the decision-making to close Providence, but just the fact that they would have that inside track is disturbing to me. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
We have to have a chance to correct the records. That's not true.
All right, just to correct the record, so that is not true. My CFO was never involved with Ascension in any way, shape, or form. He's not on the Board of Ascension. There was, appeared for a year where he was on the Board of Providence Hospital locally, well before the hospital was closed and had nothing to do with the closure, or was not on the board, and at all when the transactions happened. And in fact, none of the members of the board that he served were still on the board when the transaction was decided, nor was the head of the hospital.
The transaction, although the paperwork was signed in '23, from what I understand, this conversation has been going on since early 2019.
Yeah, well before that.
When?
We can get you this probably like 20, 14, 15.
Thank you very much. We have a quick correction comment, and then we have two more questions.
Yep, two quick questions, really quickly. Actually, one comment, one quick correction. To the question that Carmen asked that the representative from Providence Hospital or Ascension addressed, I do want to say that I don't believe that your hospital or anybody associated with Ascension did a good enough job reaching out to the community in terms of the services you were providing. And I do believe that had something to do with the low turnout at the hospital. Because every time I turned around and asked what you all were doing, you would say, oh, we sent surveys, we've sent information. I would go ask all of my neighbors, and none of us, none of us received those surveys. None of us received information about your services. And I would repeatedly knock on people's doors, and people never knew what services were still being offered. And so I believe that you all did a disservice to this community by not being better involved and informing us properly of what services were being provided and when, first of all. Second of all, I want to correct the record. Lorenz Wheatley indicated that the single-member district representative, ANC 503, which would be myself, Emily Singer-Lucio, was part of a non-disclosure agreement. That is absolutely 100% incorrect. I will say, to correct this situation, Providence Hospital owns a building that is adjacent to the property behind it by the school, Mundo Verde. Mundo Verde, we've been looking to expand, and they were possibly looking at busing half the kids to a different location. When the sale of the hospital was being discussed- When that, when the sale of the hospital was being discussed, I knew that that building was part of that. I did reach out and ask if that was a possibility for them to work together and connected the two people involved. That is the limit to what I was involved with that process. End of story, period.
Thank you, we have three more questions this evening in front.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Lockett, C-H-A-R-L-E-S, L-O-C-K-E-T-T, like lock them up. Okay, I've lived here for almost 50 years. I am the former ANC Commissioner of 5802, and participated from the time Providence was closing all the way up to now. I can assure you that someone from the government should have stepped in, based on your chart with all these efficiencies that Providence had, all these efficiencies, expenses and all that, why someone from the government had not come in there and wrote them a fine to get into their pocket? Because that tells me that the people who were going into that hospital were being exposed to this, and that is unfair, and it was preferably black people going in for that service. Okay. Secondly, I sit in the ANC position and through these meetings, I can assure you, there were commissioners who were pushing the idea for A, uh, EY, not sharing the information to us, and when we asked questions, we could not get answers. And today, that leaves me with some doubt of the individuals who are participating in that, and I hope they're not doing anything wrong that takes something from someone to, uh, give them an opportunity to take advantage of a community. Now, this community is a beautiful community, they say I've lived here almost 50 years, I watched it grow, but not one time tonight in any presentation for the last 16 years, there's someone that said, let's put a good supermarket in the neighborhood. Not one, even right across the street. We've been waiting 16 years for a supermarket. It's building now, every year they come with a different excuse for what they're going to put a supermarket here. Now, it will be 18 years before we probably see a supermarket. 18 years! So is that a part of what you call gentrification as well as structural racism? And when you talk gentrification and structural racism, I grew up in Ward 7, those people there do not have a damn supermarket, and you wonder why they come out of their neighborhood and come into our neighborhoods and rob and steal. Give them the same benefits that we have here, and you'll keep them in their neighborhood, but if you don't, this crime is off the hook in the city, and that is one of the reasons why it's happening. You put a price tag on Ward 5, the price tag said, in order for you to live here, you better pay $800,000, $900,000. These people know that, they see that they don't have that kind of money, but the minute you say you have it, they come in our dead community and they come into here, they come in and rob and steal from you. You already put a price tag on us here, we're vulnerable to thieves. Give them some of the things that keep them in their neighborhood, just like the animals do in the jungle. The lion stays there, when he finishes eating up here, he goes to the next part to eat it up, where they're doing the same thing. I love my people and everything, but I grew up in Ward 7, the same government housing that Marvin Gaye grew up in. He lived right down the street from me. I grew a prominent in the building, from Dave Bean, the basketball player, right at the bottom of the hill, played ball with him, but the city has changed, and we need to do something, and the government needs to step up and enforce these rules and regulations for this city.
Thank you very much.
They have a rat, a rat problem in the city right now.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it. We have one, we have a question right here to the front, the young lady in the white, did you have a question still?
Yeah.
Did you have a question? No? Young lady here in the red?
My name is Gwendolyn, that's spelled long, G-W-E-N-D-O-L-Y-N, V is in Victory Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. Um, I'm speaking today as just as a resident, and I guess this question is, is not somewhat just a question, but it's for the Attorney General. Um, all of the projects that have been done in this neighborhood and around have been EY. Do they have a monopoly on this, or what? Because every project that's been done recently is all EY, and that's my, that's a problem. Now, I know when they were doing that St. Joseph thing, they, they met with us all the time, and one of the things was, we wanted the houses to look pretty much like the houses in front. Now, I didn't get to go to every meeting, but I know at one time it was promised that, but most of these houses are semi-detached in a lot of the area. They were supposed to have been doing setbacks, two houses, a slight setback, and then maybe bring them up so they had the illusion that they were semi-detached. I don't see that was done in, in, uh, in, in the new project that, uh, crossed from Providence. Now, one other thing is that retention, water retention thing, that is so dangerous. I hope, I don't know what they're going to be doing, I know you have to do water retentions, but these big deep, in front of those houses, this big, I think they're miles about 24, and just deep, where you can't step out of your car and walk across the sidewalk to get to your house, you got to walk to the corner and get to your house, and they don't even have, they don't have, they have it in some, front of some houses, but not every house. If you live in the middle of the block and you park your, or you have a, a passenger, they got to walk all the way to the corner and walk back down to get there. But anyway, I just want to know, does EY have a monopoly on all the projects in this area?
Thank you, Ms. Gwendolyn. We'll give you a chance to respond, we'll have a last question before we close.
So, I just want to say thank you, because we are reviewing a lot of different aspects about this deal, so now that you bring this up, this is something that we want to hear from you, what you think is important, and so it goes into our considerations. Um, I don't have a, an answer for you, because that is a legal question, what is a monopoly, but I just want to thank you for your opinion, and again, say that this is very helpful for us, because it informs us about what the community cares about.
Mr. Foxworth, last question, and then we're going to close.
Thank you, I'm Rodney Foxworth again. I actually live in Le Mans Riggs, so for those of you who don't know, welcome to my neighborhood, you're in Le Mans Riggs. Uh, got three quick questions, the first is from Evan, we worked well with him to develop the townhouses in front of Walmart. So Evan, when you talked about, uh, the cities, and when you talked about the infrastructure for the proposed project, did you say that the city normally covers the infrastructure costs as developer, or something that's negotiated?
Can you just ask all three questions, and then we'll let anyone respond? Thank you.
The second one is more of a process, I'm hoping that the AG's office sends this transcript to the state healthcare development agency. I know that they're going to look at it from a healthcare lens, but I think that this would be very important for them. And the last question is that, I understand that you might calculate the land value vis-a-vis the public investment, um, in terms of making sure that the sale is fair, but you shouldn't do that. You should look at the millions of dollars in tax abatements, real estate abatements, um, grants, all kinds of infrastructure costs that the hospital has endured over the years, separate and aside from what you think the land may be valued at. Those are my three questions.
Thank you. So a question for OAG, and a question for, for EY.
Hi, uh, thank you for those questions. Um, so, and I appreciate your comments earlier, and, um, just want to say a little bit by way of response. So first, are we going to share the transcript of this evening's meeting with, uh, the SHIPTA, the State Health Planning and Development Agency? Uh, we are in communication, constant communication with SHIPTA, uh, about this transaction, and so we will be, we will be sharing the transcript. Uh, I believe we, well, we will also make it, uh, we'll make a version of it available on our website as well. Um, secondly, you asked, when we look at the, when we determine what is the value of the land that's being sold, how are we looking at that? So we have, uh, we've hired a real estate appraisal team, uh, that the district has worked with on a number of projects, uh, they are looking at a, a number of aspects, they are evaluating how Providence and EY, uh, reached a valuation of the property, they're also doing their own independent valuation of the property.
I'm sorry, but please do not exclude a separate calculation about the millions of dollars over the decades and, you know, grant funding, infrastructure resources, uh, tax abatements, et cetera, that cost, that, that the hospital has endured. That's a separate consideration that I'm asking you guys to look at from the actual land value.
Okay. So we are, I mean, as, as we've explained, the, the reason that we are involved in this review, the Attorney General's office is doing this review, is because Providence has received historically public support in so many ways, tax breaks, donations, public funds, um, so that, that's why we are undertaking this review to ensure that there is a fair market value, but our review is guided by the statutory factors, and so those are the factors that will guide our review, and we are, we are looking at everything that we can about this transaction that fits within those factors. So thank you.
Uh, thank you for the question on the infrastructure. So, um, infrastructure for a project gets paid for in a whole bunch of different ways, uh, depending on the project. Uh, for a site like the Josephite Seminary, where it was four acres, where it had existing streets all the way surrounding it, or had existing utilities, uh, that's typically something when you, when you, um, determine the land value for that property, we would do a pro forma, financial analysis, we would assume whatever the infrastructure cost for the onsite infrastructure we have to build, back that out as of the land value essentially, you kind of do an analysis where you, what's the cost of the project, what's the revenue, and the difference of the land value, so that's how that gets paid for. So often, it's paid for by the property owner on small sites like that. For major projects, when you're developing 20 acres, 30 acres, and you're building trunk infrastructure or major streets that, you know, don't exist, reconnecting street grid, for example, various jurisdictions handle it differently, sometimes there's TIPS, so tax increment financing, where the city actually creates, um, revenue to pay for that type of infrastructure, uh, since it's often public infrastructure. Uh, sometimes there's just direct grants for infrastructure, um, that happens both at the federal level and most jurisdictions as well, because the cost of that major trunk infrastructure that provides traffic capacity, utility capacity for the region or for the city, is often subsidized by the jurisdictions themselves. Um, and so in this case, the point I was trying to make was, we don't have that type of deal with the city on this transaction, so when we look at land value for this site and determine what that land value is, we look at, um, obviously the cost of the affordable housing we're providing, all the other public benefits we're providing, that $15 million infrastructure plus the demo cost is just an extraordinary cost of, of, um, from this site. Um, and I know that sounds crazy, how could it possibly cost $30 million to demolish a hospital, but, you know, that's something we've been walking through the OAG with in detail to make sure they understand all the costs that are involved in that, it's just much more complex than a typical, um, development.
And again, our, um, real estate experts are looking at their valuation, but they're also doing our, our independent valuation of, of the land.
All right, we've got some time, I see the head in the back, if you want to come up front when we close, so you can make sure we get your question. Just want to thank everyone here, first, for the community, I just want to give you a hand, just thank you for being here on a, on an evening that you could have been anywhere else. First and foremost, off the top of these events, we thank elected officials and everyone else, just want to thank the community. Ma'am, I'll give you a chance to ask a question after we close. Uh, also just want to thank, um, our elected officials, I believe we had ANC representatives, is there any other ANC members, if you want to raise your hand, that did not testify, they're also here. Any civic leaders here from the community? Thank you very much for being here. Any state board of education or education leaders? All right, thank you very much. I know here we also had, um, council member offices represented, I see Kelly from Council Member McDuffie's office, Kelly, thank you for being here. Any of the council member offices represented?
No.
No? Okay. Also want to thank the University of District of Columbia Community College, as you can see, we're in a beautiful space, uh, so this was made available by Boyd S. Hacker, the Association of Academic Affairs, Valerie Willis Taylor, Director of Student Life, we want to thank you for that. We also want to thank, um, our OAG colleagues who are here. As we close, I just want to just redirect you to the survey that's here. If you need a hand, you're doing this survey, I'm not calling out anyone, this technology is technology, please let us know, and someone will come and assist you. If you wanted to submit comment, public testimony, as you can see, it's open till September 29th, please take a picture of this slide, because if you don't want to do, uh, if you can submit it by email, and again, if you have a question about that, please come down, we're happy to answer that, all right? And another reminder that we have documents outside, including the forms, if you have a moment to fill that out before you leave, we would be very grateful for you to fill out the form out front, uh, so that we can have that, if you don't want to do it electronically. Thank you very much. I'm only closing because for the time limitation we've given, I want to respect that, we're going to make sure you come directly to the front to ask your question. We are adjourned, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Question? Yes. Earlier, you were, uh, talking about doing the survey, and from the survey, that you, you found out what people want. In this neighborhood, I don't think we actually got a survey from you to, to, uh, so I'm not sure how this survey is done.
We just held a public meeting, people have given us comments.
Right. The last public meeting was about the health center. We, we discussed about Providence Hospital, we, we were told that it was going to be changed into a health center. There was also documents that came out that it was going to be changed into a health center. That's what we know. There was no survey done that we knew about, that we have given a comment. Nobody was assessed around here, so who is being assessed? Who is assessing the, doing the survey? We, we would like to know. Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.